Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Marks?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. You have there the consent agenda, you have the minutes of the December 20th, 2021 regular session, the minutes of the January 3rd, 2022 regular session, tax releases and refunds, the sheriff has a budget amendment and donation of checks, also another donation for the sheriff's office from International Paper.
Thank you for the motion to approve.
All right, we have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Mr. Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. At this time, we have a public hearing. I would ask Mr. Jeff Wood if he would to come make a few comments before we go into that public hearing.
Mr. Thursday, good morning.
Good morning.
The board's request to go into a public hearing is advertised at 8:30 a.m. Sooner thereafter, you'll see public comments regarding the sale of Lot 19-7 in Craven County Industrial Park. That's about two acres of property, predominantly a blue line stream. And under departmental matters, we'll go into a little bit more detail about what the project is.
Okay, thank you, Jeff. Do I have a motion that we go into public hearing?
No, move.
Have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? And this is to go into public hearing for Project Tiger Two. All, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, Mr. Vice Chair, do we have anyone signed up this morning?
We do not.
All right, as we always do, is there any citizen that is in attendance that desires to speak before the Board of Commissioners this morning in the public hearing?
Make a motion to close here.
Second.
Have a motion and a second to close the public hearing. Any discussion on the motion? Here none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you, Jeff. All right, next we have on the departmental matters, we have CARTS, Ms. Kelly Walker-Cuthill, who has two items this morning. Good morning.
Good morning. The North Carolina Department of Transportation has released an application for American Rescue Plan capital funds. CARTS receives 5311 community transportation plan funding for the rural services provided in Craven, Jones and Pamlico Counties. All systems receiving 5311 are eligible to apply for this ARP funding. These applications are due no later than February 1st, 2022. The period of performance for this grant is March 3rd, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. CARTS anticipates using these funds during the fiscal year 2223 budget year. The ARP grant will reimburse systems for 100% of capital expenses. Expenses that qualify for reimbursement using CARES Act funding as well as ARP funding will be filed for reimbursement by the most beneficial grant. We are specifically requesting funding for 60% of the cost to replace 27 radio systems, purchase a wheelchair securement training table, replacement hard drives for the vehicle cameras, and a replacement administrative vehicle. We are asking authorization to submit a grant application in the amount of $68,276. This application has the additional requirement of certification that CARTS did not furlough any employees on or after March 27th, 2020. CARTS did not furlough employees. A copy of the program overview and application are shown in your attachment 3A.
I make a motion that we authorize to apply for American Rescue Plan.
All right, I have a motion and a second.
The VP second.
All right, Commissioner Mitchell seconds it. Is any discussion? Commissioner Leiner?
Kelly, could we applied for more? I mean, how are your vehicles and your buses? Are they all up? I mean, could we have?
We're on schedule with replacements. They would have had to have met useful life. We did put, trying to remember, in our last 5311 application in regards to vehicles, replacement vehicles would be one of the last things that they would fund. We could add that.
But I mean, how are we doing on vehicles? All your vehicles?
Yeah, we're doing good on vehicles. The ones that have not met useful life have got four being replaced this year. So the concern isn't so much the replacement vehicles as it is being able to get these radios and the replacement admin car. The radios, we have not been able to get into a 100% grant because they have not opened up CARES Act to capital. We have applied for them in the 5311 regular grant, but that requires a local match. We were advised by NCDOT to put anything that we needed into these applications, and if these were approved, then they would come out of the application. So applying in more than one application is not a problem.
Thank you, ma'am.
All right, other questions from the board? All right, here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, item B.
The North Carolina Department of Transportation has released an application for American Rescue Plan operating funds. Again, CARTS receives 5311 funding, and that's what makes us eligible to apply for the ARP funding. They are due, the applications are due no later than February 1st. The period of performance is the same of March 3rd, 2022 through June 30th, 2023. CARTS anticipates using the funds during fiscal year 2022 to 2023. The ARP grant will reimburse 100% of net operating expenses. Expenses that qualify for reimbursement using CARES Act funding as well as ARP funding will be filed for reimbursement by the most beneficial grant. We're asking to submit a grant application for ARP operating funds in the amount of $254,145. A copy of the operating funds program overview and application are shown in your attachment 3B.
I make a motion to authorize to apply for the American Rescue.
Second.
This is the VP second.
All right, I have a motion and a second. Discussion on the motion. Commissioner Leiner?
Can this, this is all operations, so this is salaries and everything?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
All right, additional questions? All right, here none. The motion is to apply for the American Rescue Plan operating funds. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Kelly.
Thank you.
Have a good day.
You too.
Next item we have is social services. I have Mr. Jeffrey Merritt. This is concerning the low-income energy assistance program funding. Good morning, sir.
Good morning, Chairman Commissioners, County Manager. We bring before you an amendment to amend our budget for low-income energy assistance program funds. We were made aware that we received a little over $90,000 more than our initial allocation. The state has also released energy assistance funds from the American Rescue Plan Act for pandemic leap funding in the amount of a little over $625,000. And with that, admin funding to administer those funds in a little bit over $87,000. If you have any questions, I'll be happy to try and answer them.
All right, questions from the board before we take the motion? Commissioner Mitchell, do you have any questions?
No, I don't, Mr. Chair.
Okay, Commissioner Leiner?
What's your talking about here for service staff and overhead? What are you talking there?
What that is, is admin funds, Commissioner Leiner, and that goes to offset the county dollar for salaries and benefits.
All right, thank you.
There's a certain percentage of funds, I would have to look at it here, that they give in order to administer those funds to pay for staff salaries and benefits.
All right, additional questions? Has the application process already started, that timeframe? When did it start?
Yes, sir. Leap is one of our regular energy assistance programs, so it always begins on December 1st for targeted population, where there has to be an individual in the household who's age 60 or over, or who was on the list of who was receiving services to the division of aged adult services that we get. Right now, we're in the application process that starts on January 1st, where all households are eligible to apply. So that will last through March 31st or until funds are exhausted, which I will state that with this amount of funds, it would be very highly unlikely that we'll see funds that will be exhausted prior to March 31st.
All right, additional questions? All right, do I have a motion to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $803,200?
No, move.
All right, I have a motion from Commissioner Mitchell. Do I have a second? Commissioner Smith seconds it. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you. Have a good day. Have a good day. Next item is economic development, the authorization of sale for Lot 19-7 and adopt the resolution. Mr. Jeff Wood, good morning.
Chairman? Much like the public hearing earlier today, we've got two acres of property that is Lot 19-7. This sits adjacent to EAE's property. They have about five acres that, one acre that the county sold a couple of years ago, the C1A, had the other four acres. Last year, we got a chance to visit, Commissioner and Jack and I got a chance to visit them. Young, successful, homegrown company. I've already reached 25 employees, has invested about a million dollars. This property is not developable, it's a blue line stream. And so what it'll be used for is for the expansion of their existing facility, gives them a little bit more acreage in their permitting process. And so not only will this assist them in sustaining those jobs and to be able to expand in the future, but also has some environmental sustainability to it as well. So I've come to you today asking you to adopt the resolution and sell the property of Lot 19-7.
Okay, are there questions? Vice Chair?
Just a question, but a comment. This parcel that we're looking to sell wouldn't really be marketable to anybody else, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Make a motion.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Second.
Vice, Commissioner McCabe seconded it. Any further discussion on the motion? Here none. The motion is to authorize the sale of Lot 19-7 at the industrial park. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you.
Item six is human resources. We have a budget amendment for the screening examination. Ms. Amber Parker?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Session Law 2021-138 Criminal Justice Reform and Session Law 136 Support Law Enforcement Mental Health requires a psychological screening examination by a licensed psychologist to determine a criminal justice officer's psychological suitability to properly fulfill a responsibility. The new laws apply to newly hired criminal justice officers as of January 1, 2022, unless they're already certified by the North Carolina Sheriff's Training and Standards Commission. The psychological screening exam must be completed prior to a new criminal justice officer receiving initial certification or before they perform any action requiring certification by the commission, and it will apply to deputies, detention officers, and telecommunicators. Basically, that means they are required to have the screening before they can do essentially any work in their positions. It's intended to establish a contract with the FMRT Group, which is an industry leader in psychological services, and the vendor Craven County routinely uses when we have to do psychological service, such as fitness for duty evaluations and other psychological services. They have over 500 clients in North Carolina, even more that are nationwide, a lot in South Carolina and even other states across the country, and they're well versed in these new requirements. The cost will be $445 for each screening, and it's estimated that we'll need approximately 40 screenings for the remainder of the fiscal year. A budget amendment in the amount of $18,000 is requested from the county's fund balance to the Human Resources Contract Services budget line to cover the cost.
All right, Commissioners, you have any questions? I just, go ahead, Vice Chair.
I was just going to ask, where do our applicants have to go to do this?
So HR will coordinate the process since it does span multiple departments. So when a department wants to hire a new process, we'll include that as part of the new hire process. We'll gather their information. There's a sheet that we get from the FMRT where we send it to them, and then they work with the applicant to get them scheduled. They said they try to get them scheduled within the same week or at the next week as latest as possible. And then they also have an online portal. They're going to walk me through that if we get everything approved today to show me how it works. But essentially, we'll submit their information, and I believe that their clinician will reach out and contact the applicant or the conditionally offered hired person to set up the screening.
So we'll be able to do it online, our applicants won't have to drive somewhere to do this?
Sure. So the law actually does require that the clinical screenings be conducted face-to-face, or if that's not practical, it does allow for an option to where it can be done virtually, so long as a setup is set up to where it still provides a clinical environment. So we would find, it wouldn't be like in their home, it almost needs to be where they would have to be away, have a private area. The screening that the clinician is doing needs to be, has to look clinical. So the law doesn't have a ton of information on exactly what that means, but just said it can be done virtually as long as it still presents a clinical appearance in how the virtual screening is completed.
All right, Commissioner Leiner?
This is another unfunded mandate sent down by our legislators. We can be thankful for.
All right. Additional questions? All right, just to expound a little bit, Vice Chair went in the direction I wanted the questions I wanted to ask, but you're saying that they have, they will have a one-on-one. I mean, do they have approved clinicians here in this county or surrounding counties that these applicants can drive to?
So I haven't looked exactly where all their office locations are. We have been sending, when we use the services, individuals to Greenville. I'm not aware that we have any here in New Bern. They are, they do have a long list of clinicians. They have licensed psychologists, they have PhDs on their list. With that large number of clients and also with the number of municipalities and counties that I see are actually going to using their services, I would imagine they're going to work on expanding that. But this law was something that just kind of came out around September, I think, is when we first started seeing it, and then just got passed for January. So it's one that kind of came upon us fairly quickly. I would imagine they would expand it, but right now, we've been sending people face-to-face for consultations in Greenville.
Okay. All right, you know, my focus is not to create an extra burden on applicants, because I could see that maybe some would, that would detour them, you know? Definitely we've got to follow the law. I think it's an impressive list that you included in here of the governmental bodies that this company deals with. I mean, it's just, I think it was 400, no, 540 different, 554. So I think I commend you for seeking out a credible company. I think they stand for itself, and also to look to see some surrounding counties around us that are utilizing their services. So, all right, any additional questions? All right, yes?
I have one. In your professional experience and estimation, you suspect this is going to have an impact on our ability to place people in these positions? In other words, let's say we send a candidate for deputy to have this evaluation, you think we're going to run into a lot of, like, this candidate has declined because of the evaluations? What's your thought on that?
Sure, I think there is a possibility, and it's interesting that this is now just becoming a requirement by law. There are a lot of individual clients, municipalities, counties that have been using the service for a long time, because you don't want to have someone that is not psychologically suitable in one of these positions. If you take a look at what's been going around the country, I think that's where this is coming from. And so there is a possibility that we could have a candidate that does get screened out. They use a multi-dimensional assessment tool. So there are a lot of tools that they use to try to see if the person is giving valid responses, if they're overestimating things. So they have tricks that they use to see if someone is being honest in their responses. And certainly, we want to make sure that those that we're hiring are psychologically suitable for their positions. So there is a possibility that there could be some ruled out. Initially, the way the report rules is they'll call back and give a verbal and say either the person is suitable, not suitable, and then it may take a week to get an actual report. So it's going to be interesting to see how it works out, but hopefully, the results of this would be making sure that we're getting the best law enforcement personnel that we can, that are physically and mentally able to do the positions and not run into what they're looking for, a lot of PTSD-type situations where they're going undiagnosed or they're not disclosed when you're hiring, and it possesses problems later on down the career.
Could be a problem later on, then.
Right.
Commissioner Mitchell, will you have anything?
No, Mr. Chair, I don't.
Okay. All right, any further questions from the board? All right, here none. I need a motion to approve the budget amendment.
No move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker? Chairman Jones?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you, appreciate it. Next, we have finance, budget amendment, consideration for COLA for the library employees. Ms. Craig Warren, good morning, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. I have one item on the agenda for you this morning. That is a budget amendment for a COLA for library employees. At your December 20th, 2021 meeting, the board approved a 5% COLA for eligible county employees effective with the pay period beginning January 5th, 2022. The board also indicated that it would like to fund the same 5% COLA for library employees as well. In order to cover that cost for the libraries, it is estimated that a budget amendment in the amount of $30,259 will be needed to carry them through the rest of the fiscal year.
All right, questions from the board? All right, here none. Do I have a motion that we approve the budget amendment?
No move.
I have a motion and a second. Any discussion on the motion? This budget amendment is for $30,259. Hearing for no further discussion on the motion. Madam Clerk, if you will, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Leiner?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, next we have a City of Havelock Parks and Recreation capital request. I want to ask if our county manager, but before he does, I want to welcome the Steen Mayor, Will Lewis. Glad to have you. And, sir, I don't think I know you. You want to introduce yourself?
I'll be glad to. My name is Chris McGee. I am the new city manager of the City of Havelock. Today's my first day. Thank you to meet you both.
All right, well, welcome.
Jason, I need you to treat him nice, though, because we're not swearing until 10:30 because we bring up here. One more hour of niceness.
All right, buddy. Well, welcome to both of you, and thank you for being here. And I didn't mean to miss you, sir. Are you part of the?
As Fred said, it was awesome recreation that we did.
Okay, glad to have you also. All right, Mr. County Manager?
Chairman, thank you for the opportunity this morning. I'm going to relive a little bit of history with you and have to ask Commissioner Leiner to help me a little bit along the way, but interim manager Jim Freeman, who's sitting against the wall there, and I began discussions when he came back on board here this fall about a discussion this board had in 2016, which was two parts. One was the operational side of the funding for parks and recreation activities for the City of Havelock. And there was an agreement then that we would pay a proportional pro-rata share of the total cost of operational only, not excluding activities that take place inside the community center or at any other park, specifically to the 101 site. And that agreement's been in place and worked pretty well, Commissioner Leiner, since 2016. It does have a small inflator based on the CPI that we use for a lot of different things in the county. So that part's there. As in duality with that issue, there was a capital request that Commissioner Leiner brought forward to the board at that time. And I will point out, that was a board ago. Some of the new members here may not have been a part of that discussion. But the question was, do we begin to fund and help them along with capital requests, again, under the same criteria at the 101 site, excluding the community center? And at that time, the board's answer was yes, we would. And they authorized Commissioner Leiner to go back to the City of Havelock and develop a series of projects with certain criteria. And if you refer to the agenda and some of the information that was provided, Mr. Freeman did a great job of outlining those in MOA that we worked on together. But ultimately, we would share the county and the city in a 50/50 environment, up to $100,000 for capital items at the 101 site. And there's, on page two of the proposed MOU, there's nine criteria, that being number one. Two would be that if there were any grants that the city received that would go into this project, it would reduce both sides in the same equitable manner. Item three, the city is to provide, you know, basically an informal bid document, scope, specifications, which they have for this particular project, are projects that they're bringing forward, basically letting us know what exactly it is that they're doing. Item four, upon basically approval by both bodies of this memorandum, 14 days, the city would advertise for bids. They would try to get some pricing in. Once those things are there, the city would share with the county the actual construction contract and the actual cost there, so we could adjust the budget. This is an estimated today, what you have in here, at the 84,700 share. That's an estimated cost. We expect to get that, Jim, again, in 14 days from now, whenever you guys get there. The city will provide the county with a notice of award, access to any pre-construction meetings, notice to proceed, documentation in the proposed timeline for completion of the project to the county. The County of Craven will reimburse, within 30 days, its share of actual paid receipts. So when the contractor invoices the city, they're going to invoice them 100%. The city will pay 100%, they give us an invoice for 50% of that cost, and then we would do that within 30 days. Eight, Travis with the Parks and Rec Department or his designated would provide a monthly update to the Board of Commissioners, which I would include in the Commissioners' memo to you of how the projects are going. And nine, basically, what this says, by participating in the capital program with the City of Havelock, the county residents that use different types of facility-based fees or league-based fees that are created by the City of Havelock would be the same, no matter if you're an in-city resident or you're a county resident outside the city limit, she would have the same fee. And in essence, Commissioners, that's the nuts and bolts of the agreement. same fee. And in essence, Commissioners, that's the nuts and bolts of the agreement. The project, and I, of course, will defer to Chris or Travis or Jim, is a couple things. One is some metalwork storage buildings that are needed for a variety of equipment and supplies that Travis has there at the park. It's a 25-by-40 building on concrete slabs. It's two of those each between each of the two ball fields that they have there. The other thing would be to reconfigure the backstops of the ball fields. If you're aware, if you've ever watched a baseball game, there's a taller one that's right behind home plate for foul balls. Over time, those things get beat up pretty good, and I believe you guys are at a point where those need to be replaced. So with that said, Jim, Chris, if there's anything I left out or anything you want to comment on, Mayor Travis, that's pretty much Commissioners what I have.
If you will, come right to the podium here.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Just want to update again on the purpose of the projects. I know with the athletic fencing, it's well over 20 years. And for safety reasons, that's why we included the two backstops on Little League Field, one and two. And also with the storage sheds, the same applies there. It's lack of storage with the endorse associations. So we just felt that if we just take one, take two storage sheds, one to be on one side of the facility, one on the other one, and just split that in half, then that'll better serve our endorse associations. I know a lot of them, if their field is here and then a storage building is way across on the other side of the property, then it's a great distance for those guys to have to walk to and from to store their equipment. So just want to just reiterate again on the actual projects that's being requested.
Thank you, sir.
Commissioner, since this project's in my district here, and I'm not exactly know where this storage shed is located, you'll come and get them?
There's a map in your packet, Commissioner McCabe.
Yeah, there's a mapping.
There's a map back on the area map that you find there, and they'll be located by both the ball fields that they play with on the main recreation complex.
Where is it?
Complex.
Where is it now?
101 complex, the ball fields out back.
Okay.
Each one of those ball fields.
And the one you have now, the storage you have now is located in a bad area for the cribbing.
Yeah, it's a long distance from there. It's inefficient. Some of the storage has been off the field. Some people have to bring it in, but it's just way out there. And this makes it so much more convenient for the league to play and Little League and that to be able to store their equipment there and just bring it right onto the field.
So this facility is for Havelock resident and county, right?
Yes, sir.
And for the hollow area, too.
Same as what we're doing now for the operational money we give them. All the county residents can use that facility.
Okay.
Commissioner Lainer, you got anything you want to?
No, I just want to I just want to thank Jim and staff for getting this together and everything else and coming forward with it. I mean, it's everything this board had asked me to get and everything else, and we're finally at that stage, and they've provided what we asked for. So it's well needed because there, if you remember, if you look, if you go in to the 101 park, right now, they're using the building, the road, if you follow the road around to the left, all the way back to the metal building, that's all the way back there. Now, the ball fields are up in this area. They've got to carry everything from here up to there.
In the future, if you don't mind, could you inform me, let me know what's going on about the area? Because I wouldn't I wouldn't inform about this.
Well, Mr. Freeman, I'm sorry I didn't recognize you. I couldn't see you around there. But we do thank you for working with us on this. Thank you. Hopefully, we can go further. And Jack did a great job presenting it. I was expecting it. But thank you, Jack, for making the presentation there with Chris.
We wouldn't we didn't think you'd be awake enough to present it.
Whoa, 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 whoa. Commissioner Smith?
Is this is this the is the size 24 by 40? Am I reading that right? What's the size of the storage building?
Yes, me by 40.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioner Mitchell, do you have any questions?
No, Mr. Chair. I think this is a it's a great step forward for our relationship with Havelock, and I think it's a great step forward for the citizens of the county.
I agree.
Yes, ma'am. Yeah. I would just state that, yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
I was just going to, just, Chair, if I could say one thing, just to add to what the actual number. It is also for county residents, as we said, 42% of our users do not live in the city limits or pay city taxes. They're in Harlow, Carolina Pines, Stately Pines, and all the unincorporated areas around us. So when we say it serves county folks, it's not 12 county folks. We're talking about thousands and thousands of county folks. So I just want to add the actual statistic.
Okay, thank you. I just only comment I'll make is I know from day one in which I met Commissioner McCabe and day one in which I met Commissioner Lainer and served with him on this board, both have been advocates for recreation in Havelock, Harlow areas there. And this was a great collaboration, I believe, on behalf of the City of Havelock and Craven County. And, you know, the formula that we have set up that the Board of Commissioners have been willing to fund, and then also your board, and willing to accommodate more than just city residents. We appreciate that. And so I think it's good for the future. I think it's good for our citizens as a whole in the municipality and outside. So a good working relationship. I commend the two Commissioners that represent that area for your efforts in bringing this together and, again, for the team effort. If there's no more discussion on about this, we do have a request to authorize the Chairman to sign the memorandum of understanding with the City of Havelock and to approve the budget amendment in the amount of $84,700.
Make a motion.
Commissioner Lainer made the motion. Commissioner Smith, she seconded. Is any further discussion on the motion? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones.
Yes. Thank you. Thank you all for being here. Have a good day.
Good day. Oh, yeah.
Next on the agenda, Commissioners, are appointments. You have their pending appointments. I just want to say that the county manager and I and the vice chair have sat down, and we are trying to address some of these pending appointments. We will probably have further discussion at our work session on a few of them that we're going to have in February just to bring the board up on some actions that are taking place. But we are working on them. I ask for Commissioners to continue also to search out citizens who might desire to serve. We have no current appointments today, and you see there for the upcoming terms expiring in February and March. Does anyone have anything on appointments today? All right, here no comments. We will move next to the county attorney's report. Mr. Eric Grady.
No report, Mr. Chairman.
All right. Thank you, sir. Next would be county manager's report, Mr. Jack White.
Mr. Chairman, thank you for the opportunity this morning. Couple things. Next Monday, January the 24th, would be an opportunity this board could receive a presentation from county staff related to the American Rescue Plan dollars that have been authorized to Craven County. We are under an obligation through the Department of Treasury to complete a series of documents we would ask you to review and consider at your next meeting, which will be on the 24th. We'd ask that you recess this meeting until 8:30 on Monday the 24th, if you see fit. If not, then we need to discuss another time. I think that staff is rapidly working toward getting you a presentation that finally makes sense. As I've noted to the board, over probably the last eight or nine months, there was really limited guidance up until about a week and a half ago, when we finally got the final guidance that we were looking for. There's some good news inside that guidance, and there's some gray area still inside that. And we're going to have to try to put all that together and come up with a plan that you can support and live with. So, Mr. Chairman, I would just ask that. Second, Commissioner Smith and I, on Friday, had the opportunity, and she may touch on it a little bit, to meet with Pat Morrow with Smart Start. I thought it was a really good meeting to understand their goals and what they're up to. I think we all know there's certainly a lot of work to be done with our youngest citizens, and the work that we do is exceptionally meaningful because we can change so much about the narrative for their life at that age. So I would just point out that as we develop that relationship, there may be things we come back to the board with over time. Also, last week, I participated in an ACT meeting, which Commissioner Mitchell may discuss in her report. I thought it went really well. ACT's looking at different options for what they can be in the future and how they can be best positioned to meet the needs Cherry Point and the citizens that it represents. So, Mr. Chairman, that's my report, unless the board has any questions.
All right, any questions for the county manager? All right, I would ask the Commissioners, there was a request to recess this meeting today to January 24th at 8:30 a.m. Are all the Commissioners able to attend that day?
Yes.
All right.
Yes.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mitchell. Got head nods from everyone in the room. So at the end of this meeting, we will be recessing to reconvene in this room, correct?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd also note the county attorney, at the end of the meeting, will walk you into a closed session this for the agenda.
All right, thank you. All right, next we will have Commissioners' report. Commissioner Mark, would you like to start this morning?
Yeah, I attended a precinct meeting at Fairfield Harbor. They had about 55 people in attendance, and they talked about what they were going to be doing at the county convention. In addition to that, I believe we have.
Commissioner Marks, I can barely hear you.
I got the mic right there.
Speak up.
Speak up. I was talking about the number of people that attended the precinct meeting at Fairfield Harbor or Precinct 20. They had about 55 people there, and a good part of the discussion was on the coming county meeting, which will be in sometime at the end of March. And as far as the hospital's concerned, I believe we have 51 people that were there for COVID. And out of the 51, I believe there were two IPs. And I think out of that, 19 of the people that were there were vaccinated of some sort, one or two or three. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Commissioner Mark. Commissioner McCabe?
Mr. Chair, I don't have anything to express a moment.
All right. Commissioner Mitchell?
No, Mr. Chair, nothing to report.
All right, thank you. Commissioner Lainer?
Sir, nothing to report.
Commissioner Smith?
I would like to say just a word to continue the conversation that Jack started. We did meet with Pat, and of course, she's going to be leaving the organization shortly. However, we're looking forward to a good continued relationship with that organization. It is so very important that our young people get a good start, that we support them, especially in their health and education, because we know that that is absolutely necessary for our society to be successful. It's important for all of us to make sure that children are well-educated, well-fed, and nourished so that they can become good citizens and won't take those wrong pathways that we see so often. So I'm so pleased with our county manager to work with me and take the time to do this. And I think I need to take just a moment to say to this organization how much I appreciate the time that he has taken with me and working with some of the things of my interest, and it's much appreciated.
Thank you, ma'am. All right, Vice Chair Booker?
I have nothing to report.
All right. Commissioners, I have nothing this morning to report. At this time, I'm going to ask if we will take a motion to go into closed session. When I ask after that, we take about a five-minute recess so staff can get the room prepared. And this closed session is pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A1. It is to prevent the disclosure of information that is privileged or confidential. Anything else to add to that, Mr. County Attorney?
No, sir, that's perfect.
All right.
Motion.
We have a motion from Commissioner Lainer. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second from Commissioner Smith. Any discussion on the motion that we go into closed session? Here none. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Mitchell?
Yes.
Commissioner Smith?
Yes.
Commissioner Lainer?
Yes.
Commissioner Mark?
Yes.
Commissioner McCabe?
Yes.
Vice Chairman Booker?
Yes.
Chairman Jones?
Yes. All right, again, we'll take about a five-minute recess.